Mike check. Check.
Welcome to the RSU 22 Board of Directors' Meeting. Everyone is here and I would ask everyone to stand up if they're able to join me in the place.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now I'm open to motions on approval of minutes for the meeting of April 60. This is not the budget workshop, the board meeting in April. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes, any discussion? Not here in any, all in favor? And that's unanimous, or no, any abstentions? Are there any adjustments to the agenda? All right, and I'll hand it over to Nick for the recognitions.
Good evening, as you can see, we have a number of individuals here to be recognized today, and what I would like to do is start with the students. So I would ask Molly Priest to come up with her students, and it'd be Voices Unlimited could at least stand. You're welcome to be in the front if you'd like. You'll have to be somewhat close because I will at least ask for your names and your grades if you're able to so. And so in front of you, you have Voices Unlimited, there should be a microphone on this podium. Molly, I don't think I've told you that you'd be talking, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. If you could just let this group know who they are, what they have done, and the accomplishments this year, that would be great.
Yes, so this is our Hampton Academy Voice Unlimited, our show choir. They're auditioned out of our choral program, and every year they compete in a state competition, state show competition where they do a show. We rehearse from about December until March with full choreography and music for about 20 minutes from that show. This year it was a Fleetwood Mac show, and it had all the songs, no, not all the songs, five of the songs, six, six of the songs from Rumors album. And yeah, and they received a gold rating, it's out of 100, and they got a score of 97 with three judges, so yes. It was only my second year teaching show choir, so I was pretty pleased. Yeah, and there are only three groups that got golds. They do a rating system, not like a first, second, third, but ratings. So we got gold out of three people, so we're definitely one of the top three. So yeah, do you want us to go down the line, have them say their name?
Before that happens, was there any reason why the Fleetwood Mac piece was chosen?
Oh, well, the students we had last year, it kind of sparked from an idea that I had students that really loved Fleetwood Mac, because they're just old souls, and they like good music. And so I had a really excellent guitarist, Sean Morse, and then an excellent jazz ball trade, Jacob Fangjoy, in my room one day, and I said, "Hey, what do you think of Fleetwood Mac?" And they're like, "Yeah." And so that's how it pretty much happened. And the whole pit, our whole band that accompanies them is student-run, which no other group had all students, it was only ours. We had a student bass player, Claire, and a student drummer, Katie Jennifer, who's also an excellent student as well, does a lot of math things, very smart, this man. And then we had Jordan Seavy on keys over here, and then we had Sean Morse on guitar. And it was all student-run, they played the whole show and got like really great comments from the judges in those. Oh, also Jacob, Jacob tore his ACL, so he also was part of the band in the end. He was gonna sing it, and then he had to play guitar, and also singing, Patrick. Yeah, you always hear his ACL before a show, I think last year too. Other questions for introducing? Cool, all right, guys, so I guess your name, what you do, voice-wise, instrument-wise, and then the grade, maybe? That sound good?
As mentioned, I'm Jacob Fangjoy, and I play the guitar and I sing tenor in the ensemble here, and I'm a junior.
Hey, I'm Harrison Burnham, I'm a bass, and I'm a sophomore this year.
I'm Gabe Pennell, I'm a tenor, and I am a sophomore this year.
I'm Evelyn Oiler, I'm a soprano, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Abby Scott, and I'm a senior, and I don't usually like to like mention things that are like cool, but because we're here for this, I was also one of four people at the state competition that won a soloist award for Songbird. I'm very lucky that that happened my senior year, but I'm a senior and I'm like an alto meso-soprano.
I'm Jordan Seavy, and I play piano, and I'm a senior.
I'm Claire Barrett, I play bass, and I'm a senior.
I'm Louis Tripp, I sing soprano, and I'm a junior.
I'm Liliana Flune, I'm a soprano and senior.
I'm Jessica Sass, I am an alto and I'm a junior.
I'm Ainsley Amelia, I'm an alto, I'm a junior, and I do choreography for this choir.
I'm Sarah Haskell, I'm a soprano and I am a junior.
Well, this is going to be important, JCL convention, because they do everything, and yeah, I forgot about Abby, yeah, Abby got a really great award too, she mentioned it herself, which I do, but yeah, I mean, great kids. We also show Friday in Brooksman, we're doing one new song that yeah, Ainsley choreographed. We have student choreographers in this group too, because I'm not a dancer. I love to dance, but I don't do that. And yeah, so that's in Brooksman, seven o'clock on Friday, so anyone's free Friday night, they're gonna do the whole show again, it's really fun.
Well, thank you very much, congratulations to you all, I know that not everyone could be here, but kudos to everyone. The music program has always been top-notch in this district, and you're gonna hear more about that shortly, but congratulations to you all, you certainly represented RSU 22 and Hampton Academy very well. Thank you very much.
And now, since we had the students stand up, I have two music staff who I would like to come up to the podium as well, because I would like them to be in the front, so everyone can see, so if you wouldn't mind just coming to the podium, I have a couple things to read. I didn't really want to tell them what I would do, because I was afraid they just wouldn't show up, but it's not anything new, it's stuff that has already been said. In front of us, we have two individuals, let me just get to my correct page, we have two individuals who were recognized last week at the Maine Music Educators Association reception. A third one was also recognized, who is a retired RSU 22 teacher, and she could not be here tonight, but the two individuals we have in front of us are Rebecca Mallory and Dana Ross, so. I think he was awarded the Middle School Music Teacher of the Year for Maine Music Educators Association, and Dana, along with Heidi Corliss, were recognized as the association's Hall of Fame, which I'm not exactly sure how many people are in that, I will let Mr. Ross a few moments talk about that in a moment, but just a couple of things to read beforehand. All three, and every individual that was recognized that night, it was a fantastic ceremony, every individual that was recognized that night had a nice write-up explaining their accomplishments, what they do for children, and the students within their schools, and it's obviously specific to music education. And so I wanted to take just a snippet of each one of their write-ups. I want to thank Mr. Priest for getting these, I'm not sure if they're copyrighted or not, but I am stealing them and using pieces of it, so I will start with Mrs. Corliss, since she's not here. For over 40 years, Heidi has devoted herself to public education, transforming the lives of countless students and leaving a profound mark on choral music in Maine. During her 35 years at Hampton Academy, her choirs not only earned awards and recognitions, but also became a true reflection of her passion, high standards, and belief in the power of music. Beyond the podium, she has mentored over 40 student teachers, and interestingly enough, I think there were about three or four that were there that night, and one of them just spoke to us, Molly Priest. Guiding them with care and wisdom to become both skilled educators and kind, thoughtful human beings. Her influence continues to ripple outward, touching schools and communities across the state. What truly sets Heidi apart is how deeply she invests in people, she's not just a talented educator, she's a pillar in the main music community, a trusted colleague, and an unwavering advocate for music in public schools. And it goes on, but that's just a small summary of the kind words that were said about Heidi. Molly and Jason nominated both Heidi and Dana, and Heidi's response, she obviously said she couldn't be here tonight, but she said she was surprised, is an understatement. "I was blessed to have a career that I loved and felt like I had made a difference every day. I had a family that supported me in that, a necessity as a music teacher. I was blessed to work in the system where working for excellence was encouraged and I felt supported. I am thankful for music colleagues who had the same philosophy of music education and work ethic beyond compare. I can't say enough about the importance of music education for all children in brain function, social connection, mental health, and just plain joy. My heartfelt congratulations to all of the awardees and thank you so very much." So that was from Heidi. The next one is Dana, so again, Hall of Fame, snippet from Dana's write-up. Dana Ross is one of those rare educators who leaves a lasting mark on everyone he works with. As both a mentor and colleague, he's inspired us through his unwavering dedication, warmth, and passion for music education. For over 20 years at Wager Middle School, Dana has created a space where every student, no matter their background, feels seen, valued, and motivated to succeed. His influence reaches far beyond the classroom, lifting up not just students, but their families and the entire community. Even when faced with challenges, Dana embraces growth, like when he chose to take private voice lessons to strengthen his choral teaching. As department head, he's brought music educators together, fostering a supportive team, and helping make music a meaningful part of every student's education. Dana truly embodies the heart of what it means to be a music educator. Dana, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I came into this program as an 11-year-old student at Willoughby. We moved here from Carbo, and we moved to Hampton, and the program here was already established very well. Jerry Bates, running the department, and Kermit Farben at the high school, along with John Haskell. And it was because of that education that I got mine. I might keep that going for anyone that wants that. There was my music teacher that introduced me to Berklee College Music, I didn't even know it existed. And so I had a chance to go there, because of those connections, all of the things that I get to do performing-wise now, I get to do because of that connection. So I hope that 20 years, 10 years, someone here is doing what I'm doing and helping to help others do the same thing. So I guess that's my kind of my history, and why I do what I do.
And the last one we want to recognize, and this one was nominated by Dr. Thibodeau, Becky Mallory. As I mentioned earlier, she is the Educator of the Year for Middle School Music. Rebecca Mallory is deserving of this honor for so many reasons. As a music educator at Reed'sburg Middle School in RSU 22, she has created a culture of excellence, collaboration, and mentorship. One of Rebecca's most remarkable achievements is her ability to maintain a robust music program, with a large majority of our school's population electing to participate in band, chords, or both. This level of participation is a testament to her exceptional teaching skills, her ability to engage and inspire students, and her unwavering commitment to providing a high-quality music education. Becky brings passion and expertise to her teaching. She focuses on student learning and musical skills and techniques, while also fostering critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Her efforts to challenge students is shown through their successes. So I will give Becky an opportunity, if she would like to speak, otherwise I will say something.
Is this one good? Okay, thank you very much. So it is an emotional night, I really appreciate the recognition. I've been, I raise my students, my, I raise my students. I raise my children, I'm really exhausted. I raise my children here through the district, and I absolutely love my job. I was hired originally as an instrumental music teacher, part-time, and I was working for a charity that helps survivors of human trafficking on the side. And then my job kept getting bigger and bigger, and so I took on chorus about 10 years ago, 11 years ago. We are all specialized, we have a K through to 12 certificate in music, but it's a very big umbrella. We all have our own specialties, mine's instrumental, Heidi's is choral, Heidi can probably do bands, but she really wouldn't be happy, it's not really great for the kids. I did chorus, that's a huge challenge, and I thought it would be temporary, and I loved all the time I did it, but I'm not, I should not be in front of a chorus, I'm not a vocalist. I destroyed my voice, and kids deserve better, and I got burnt out, which is why I resigned. I'm just, I need, I knew, it's not fair to the kids. And so hopefully with your awesome new candidate, you don't burn out, because he's a real instrumental guy, but he can also do everything. And I really appreciate the opportunity to grow the program. We both have gold award-winning jazz ensembles, I don't know how you show up, I did, but you know, it takes a lot to get those gold medals, it's a huge, it's really a hard rubric, and it's a hard standard to meet every year. So thank you for supporting our amazing program, it's really on the backs of the teachers and your support, because we care about the kids, but that's why we're all here. They're worth it, and I just wish, that was the best, hopefully. And we have a carnival tomorrow for our fundraiser, we have a lot of really fun, great things, so I'm not really looking at this being the end, but I really appreciate the recognition. And like Dana said, please keep supporting it, it was a great place to raise my children, and I'm not leaving the community all year round, so hopefully I'll play on the musical or something on the side, but thank you very much.
Well, congratulations to Becky and Harrison Burnham for being here today. It just goes to show the music program, and this is a small snippet of the music program, pre-K to 12. The program itself is flourishing, and it is because of the educators that we have here tonight, and I certainly really appreciate it, and again, one last time, congratulations to the two of you, and obviously to Heidi, who couldn't be here today. There's one other teacher that we want to recognize, unfortunately, as mentioned, he is already at JCL, so we will recognize him in June, and that will be Ben Johnson, who is the Penoxville County Teacher of the Year, so you'll be hearing more about that in our next month's meeting. All right, thank you, everyone. Are there no people signed up to this? All right, so Board Chair report, I don't have anything this one, we've got a full docket, so I'll move on to the resignations. We have a few resignations to announce. Andrea Vazino, Assistant Director of Special Services. Jared Bean, Science Teacher at Hampton Academy. Darlene Alderson, Math Teacher at Hampton Academy. Brian White, Special Education Teacher at Leroy H. Smith School. And Destiny Rann, Occupational Therapist at LeBraun, Weatherby, and Smith. Nominations and transfers. Two nominations tonight, one of which was added just a little later earlier today, the first one who was written, I'd like to nominate Michelle Louis Jacques for Special Education Teacher at Hampton Academy.
for a Special Education Teacher at Hampton Academy. Michelle has twenty years' experience as a math teacher. She has a master's degree in educational leadership from Western Governors University. Nominating Michelle a salary at eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Nice to see everybody, and I'm honored to join the district. Thank you.
So we have a motion to end the second on the floor. All those, or any discussion?
Good question. I noticed that she's a math teacher. She has her certificate in special education.
Any other comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor? And that looks like everyone. Next one we have is Maxwell Carter. Maxwell has a bachelor's degree from U-Maine, K-12 music certification. Student taught here at RSU 22. Nominating Maxwell as a music teacher at Reedsbrook Middle School, a salary of forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
We have a number of transfers to announce as well. Lee Luna, Grade Three Teacher at Leroy H. Smith School to Grade Four Teacher at Smith School. Chris Beckwith, Technology Teacher at Reedsbrook. He was our distinguished educator who was on loan with the Department of Education for the last couple of years. Chris is transferring to Grade Three at Leroy H. Smith School. Dr. Susan Thibodeau, Principal at Reedsbrook Middle School, will transfer to being the principal at Hampton Academy. Jennifer Seer, Principal at George B. Wetherby School, will be principal at Reedsbrook Middle School. And Matthew Lindman, Principal at Earl McGraw School, will now be principal at George B. Wetherby School.
All right, thank you. Jessica, you're up with essential behavior in outcomes.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children themselves, our schools, our communities, support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
All right, and now the Superintendent's Report. First item under my report will be the presentation from Principal Pratt from Wagner Middle School.
I was thinking I might have to get Dana to help me. I have to say a little story about Dana. When I was a principal in Glenburg, Dana's, the show choir jazz band came out and performed, and I always, I'd seen them walk around, of course, having taught in the district. And the thing that, and just always so enjoyable to watch that group. And the thing that really struck me was, as Dana knows, we have a fabulous music teacher, and they respect each other immensely. And, oops, what am I doing here? I can't obviously talk and do this. And so that music teacher reported to me that after the Wagner Show Choir appeared, that they all went back to her, and it inspired them to do different with their performances. And she said, you know, they were expecting to do this overnight, and they really worked hard to put some additions into their, rather than just singing, to put some performance into it. So he has inspired other districts. I know for a fact. Well, I'm glad to be presenting to you folks tonight. With any organization and situation, there are always some hiccups, and there are, and the importance are with the hiccups, there's what are we doing about them? So this is kind of a little bit of celebration, a little bit of hiccup, and a little bit of, these are some things that we have that are helping Wagner Middle School progress in the trajectory that we would hope for. We're going to start with the state and the accountability indicators, and what that has, what impact that has on Wagner Middle School, and where we're going with that. So when your students and your children, you hear them talking about taking the state assessments, when the state gets those results, they are looking at these five indicators. They're looking at chronic absenteeism. They're looking at their progress in English proficiency. They're looking at academic progress, like how much gain have they made? Academic achievement, their grade, and the graduation rate of the district, or that particular school, this high school. We have some, and I left my notes back there, we have some changes this year. They were called something different, and now they are these initials. And we have a comprehensive school intervention. So it's CSI, we have, that means that Title I schools, with all student population experiencing challenges across all of the indicators that they measure, if they are in the emerging, which is the, they haven't met the standard, in all indicators for one year. And then they have this other ATS I, which is the additional targeted interventions, school interventions, is all schools with at least one student population. So when they break down the student populations from white to Native American to students with disabilities, all those different categories. And if you have at least one of those categories experiencing challenges, emerging, in all indicators for one year. And another category is TSI, with all schools that have one or more student populations not meeting their targets for three consecutive years. Wagner Middle School has been identified, I'll stop right here. So we looked down at what is, the question was posed, what is the identification percentage across the state of Maine? So we have the CSI, about eight point six percent of the schools, now, this is not districts, these are schools. Sixty point one percent are in that ATS I, additional targeted interventions. And the TSI, twelve point five percent. And only about nineteen percent of the schools in the state of Maine don't have some kind of identification. Wagner Middle School has the ATS I identification, additional targeted support and improvement. We have, we were identified in mathematics and in chronic absenteeism, not in ELA. That is based on this kind of chart that you get, there's no way you can read that. But if you look at the circles, the circles mean not met, or another wording that they use for that is emerging. The checkmarks are met, and then the triangles are accelerating. So you have the different categories. You have, on the far left, you have the chronic absenteeism, with the top row is all students, and then they've broken it down into those subgroups. So in chronic absenteeism, based on, this one is based on twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four data. We had fifteen point nine percent chronic absenteeism rate. If you move across to the second red circle, that is the progress that they've made in ELA. But because you move all the way across to the checkmark, that we made adequate achievement in ELA. So therefore, that does not identify us in that area. And then the next row across, the next circle is in mathematic progress, and the last dot is mathematic achievement. And so we, that, based on this, we are, chronic absenteeism in the emerging, academic progress in mathematics in emerging, and academic achievement in mathematics was identified as emerging. So we, so we have a plan that we have to then make based on that data. So our plans are around the targets, which are attendance, math achievement, and math growth. One of the things in that, we have a comprehensive needs assessment that every school does, the CNA, and we have a math goal. And then underneath that, you have all of these action steps that you'll take to help you achieve that goal, making sure that our students reach that mark that is expected. The same for reading, and then attendance. You'll see that the attendance is, you may question like, that's a goal for attendance, but attendance is the climate survey that we take through another program that I'll talk to you about, and the certain grades that we want about good behavior, how is that, affect attendance. So the first thing that we did was, we have partnered with CAPTMEIN. And we have a gal named Jessica that meets with Wagner Middle School every month for attendance meetings, and we follow this flow chart. And what she's done is she's helped us look at, we've had attendance meetings in the past, but she's helped us streamline the way that those are run. She's given us some documents that we can use to collect the data and make decisions based on that data and track what's happening with attendance. It's involving community partnerships. It talks about building relationships. And they, their claim to fame is those districts that have fully implemented the CAPTMEIN model with fidelity have decreased their rates of chronic absenteeism by an average of twenty-three percent. Another thing that we're doing to address our attendance is, again, it's that, it's behavior. So this is PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And we have this chart that comes from PBIS. And PBIS talks about that last, that biggest tier. That's where your students that are missed five to nine percent of the school year. The state does not want anyone missing over ten percent. Ten percent is the threshold. So Tier Two is those students fall in that tier are those that have missed ten to nineteen percent of their school, and that top tier is the twenty percent. What we're doing so far, and I'll quickly do this, but then I have a couple more that I can go into some in-depth. But Tier One, we have things that I'll explain, attendance streaks, that are addressing everybody, even if they don't have any absences. Another thing we're doing with everybody is we're doing busted slips. We are doing the climate surveys that we have in our CNA. That's where we want those scores to go up about behaviors. Behaviors allow my teachers to teach. And then the last is the newsletter that goes out to everybody. And in that, there's always a little blurb about, you know, what's our current attendance rate for the week? There's a little document on what, how does attendance affect your child's learning and academics? It's all intertwined. If students are not feeling like they can learn because it's chaotic, they may not show up. If a student feels that they're always getting in trouble, they need to internalize what's happening with their behavior, but that attitude will keep them home. And they'll start to have upset stomachs, and they'll come up with excuses as to why not to come to school. So we include behavior in this model of attacking attendance because there's a direct correlation between the two. So in the newsletter, it's, you know, if your child misses this many days, this is what could happen with their reading and their mathematics. Then we go up the next tier where it is the ten to nineteen percent. And we have family meetings. We have attendance meetings with those families. And we come up with a plan. The child is involved. And it's like a little mini-contract where we say, okay, what is the root cause? How can we help? What are some things that you need? And the student says, you know, these are the things that I will agree to do. The school, these are the things that we agree to do. And the parents, here's how we will support. And then everybody signs the contract. We have a school van. And then sometimes in making those contracts, you will hear, I can't get her to come to school. She's really fighting me. And we will offer that van, that, you know, there might be a conflict on the, we've heard that there's, they don't like the bus, that there's a conflict with some students on the bus. We'll offer the van. They've not taken us up on it. It's not been misused, but we have, just this week, I went and picked up a student because there was an issue. They weren't going to be able to get to school, so we went and got them. So that is offered in that range for students to make sure that they get there. All they have to do is reach out and ask. And that top layer is the Tier Three, where we have the really significantly chronically absent students. Sometimes that's where the truancy falls in. If, and I say sometimes because a student can have twenty percent of their day absent and not be truant as long as they are excused absences. That keeps them in that chronically absent. So the truant students or the really chronically absent students, when we had an SRO, which is why I really look forward to getting one back, is he would make home visits. He would be involved in the family meetings. He would make home visits and that connection. And as recently as this afternoon in a staff meeting, staff were saying that we have students that even though he's not here, that is still, that's ingrained in them, the message that he gave them and the impact that he had on their importance to get to school. This is, this is kind of what we do with the streaks, the attendance streaks. And this was a staff member came up with this when we were working on different things to address attendance. And so we started working on this in about March. And we have this little board that's right front and center when the kids come in. The one thing that we've noticed that the kids, you know, a whiteboard is very, they're very tempted to go over and run their fingers through it, you know, and you have all of these. No one touches that board except for the day, our goal is ninety-three percent being in school. And there was one day that we didn't have ninety-three percent, and we noticed that there were fingerprints down through it. That's the only time that anybody has touched that board, which shows you that they respect it, they appreciate it, they're looking at it, it's theirs, they own it. So we look, and we've broken it down by grade levels. Then we have a whole school, and then I report all of that information out in the newsletter. On the left is in front of the office, and we have a staff member who's made these flames so that we have these attendance flames. And we, when we announced that we were starting this, we said, now, after a certain amount of flames or streaks, which we did not announce, we are going to have a little award. And the award is unannounced. They don't know how many streaks they need. And the purpose of that is you need to be in school every day or you're going to miss out on the activity. So the first thing that we did on the left is we decorated a cart. And I went around and everybody came up and got a snack. And that was there, and I did hear some kids saying, oh, so-and-so isn't here. They missed, oh. After that, we then started on the right. You see that we have some kids eating outside. We all of a sudden had our sixth graders who went somewhere around ten days. There was a break, maybe a day in there somewhere, but for ten days, they've had a hundred percent attendance. A hundred percent. So that was an announced reward. And we went in and I told them in the cafeteria that they could go outside. They were going to eat outside, and they had an ice cream treat as a little extra addition. And we've made that announcement. We're waiting for more, for kids to step up and that way encourage each other, come to school. We want, we want the next reward. We are now running, our goal was ninety-three percent. And you set a goal that's attainable at first, but is just, you know, is just attainable because you want them to feel that success. We are now running anywhere from ninety-five to ninety-seven percent attendance rate every day. It's been incredible. Busted slips is another way that we're addressing those attendance because through behavior, if they come to school and they can't learn that their class is frustrating, or they don't feel recognized, or they don't feel like they belong. And so a long time ago, but way before me, they came up with busted slips. And so you're busted for making the right choice. And they go in buckets. And then every Wednesday during each lunch period, we draw the winner out of the bucket, and they have a big treasure chest that they draw from. And then, and then we take the picture and we put it in the newsletter. And then if they have ten, then they can opt to do a bigger prize, which one of them is, Brenda, who works in our kitchen, has always done cooking activity with them. And that's one of their choices. So even though their name doesn't get drawn out of the bucket, they can save the other half and collect ten and then do, they can always get a prize. To address the academics, it's really difficult to, not impossible, certainly, but when you think about that we're identified in mathematics, a lot of the strategies that we use in mathematics are transcended to all academics. So it could say math and reading. It could say all content up here. And again, we have another Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. Tier One being that general, what the instruction you give to everybody. Tier Two is those small groups, and the Tier Three would be those pullouts, those really intensive interventions. So we have been working hard on, this particular school year, we have gone from, for our Tier Two kids, we have gone from having a half, one halftime Title One position to one and a half Title One positions. We're finding that we still have kids that we didn't have room for in schedules, and we need to make sure that we're getting everybody. We don't want, we don't want the cutoff to be so high. And so what has been proposed is that this coming year, that we will again increase from one point five to two whole Title One positions to give that intervention to our students. And again, we're identified in mathematics, but students also need help and assistance with that reading. We have response to intervention where teachers have a We have response to intervention where teachers have a little form that, and they, when they're meeting in their grade levels, they discuss students and they say, okay, the student is struggling academically. Here's the plan. Here's how we're going to give them targeted and structured rate within the classroom. That's why it's Tier One, uh, Tier Two rather, because it's that intervention, but it's within the classroom. The other thing that's been missing is SAT student assistant team. That's been missing for a little bit from Wagner. And so we are starting that back up. And that is comprised of staff members from different grade levels, special education, gifted and talented. And we try to have all walks and all positions and so that we have this various perspective. Kind of look at it as a think tank so a teacher can come with a student's name and present to their colleagues. And then we all brainstorm and come up with a plan for that student to try to get them over that learning hump. What is the tangle? What needs to happen from there? And then of course, we have professional development and just some of it that we've had, building thinking classrooms, which was directed at mathematics, but certainly there are things in there that can be used anywhere. The regulated classroom, when those bodies are regulated, when the staff is regulated, more good teaching happens, learning happens. Belonging with a culture of dignity. If you don't feel you belong, you're not going to show up. So that one, I truly believe affects attendance and it affects that student's ability to participate in a class, to succeed in a class. So that's some of the professional development that's happening. How do we get all of this done? There's a lot on our plate. There's a lot that we have going on. It's because we have an amazing staff. And we will have this new identification every year. The state looks at identifications and makes those each year. We have this amazing staff. This is a picture of four of the staff that recently earned their master's degree. Emily Armore is our guidance counselor. She earned her master's in counseling with a concentration in school counseling through the University of Southern Maine. Sarah Acey, who is one of our ELA teachers, has a master of literacy education from the University of Maine in Orano. Greg Martin, who teaches social studies and part-time ELA, earned a master's in educational instruction technology through the University of Maine. We integrate so much technology into our learning. And Betsy Murphy, who is currently a fifth grade teacher teaching math. She has a master's degree in educational leadership from the University of Southern Maine. Then we have, another highlight is Sam Poehl, that she has been selected as one of Maine's state finalists for the 2025 Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science and Teaching. She has let me know that this takes a long time and the winner will not be announced probably until next year. The other thing is we have the Maine Mathematics and Science Alliance, the MMSA. They recognized seven educators across the state of Maine in their, on their site for Educator Appreciation Week. And Samantha Poehl was one of those educators. And what they said about her was Samantha has brought sharp insights about how to integrate energy topics into both math and science classes as a member of the MMSA's Rural Energy Futures Project Design Team. So she is there helping, working on designing projects. And then of course, we have Mr. Dana Ross, who was inducted into the Maine Educator Association Hall of Fame. We also have amazing students who are ready to work and learn. And these are the recent awards that have been given. So we have, this is the Wagner Jazz Band took gold at the Maine State Jazz Festival. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We have our Wagner, Wagner students participated in Eastern Maine Math League Division Two competition. And our eighth grade team took first place. And then in the individuals, we had one individual who took first place and six students who placed in the top 10. So congratulations to them. And then we have our engineering team that competed on a windstorm challenge. And this one, I was able to count and see that there were 62 teams there. One of our teams took first place with their project and one team took fourth place. So both of those are amazing, especially when you're thinking out of 62 teams. So we have amazing staff, students. We have work in front of us. We have a plan in front of us. We've been working on this plan. We've seen the results of this plan. And I have confidence that we are heading in the right direction. So any questions?
So Angela, as part, where we are identified as ATI, does that bring in any Title One funds, additional Title One funds to the school or is it?
It's unfunded. And I'll look to Jennifer that it's unfunded. Originally, they had labeled it something different and it was still unfunded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. This brings us to another recognition today, this evening. So tonight might be our, one of our student representatives' last meeting. She's always welcome to come in June, but oftentimes when the seniors tend to graduate, they tend to forget about us. So you are welcome to come to the June meeting, but in the event that you're not here, we always plan for it to be in May with the anticipation you might not be here. So this is Liliana Faloon's possible last meeting with us. She has been with us for two years. And as a reminder to those folks that have been with us for a few years and to new to anyone who's been with us just as of recently, there is a scholarship that goes along with being this student representative. And so Liliana will be presented at the graduation, a $250 scholarship for being part of the Board of Directors for the last couple of years. But in addition to that, we just have a small token of our appreciation of a certificate for you. And then you will be announced at the graduation for the $250 scholarship as well. So I have a letter for that for you as well as a certificate.
I did write in my board report, but do want to announce publicly a formal thank you to Bangor Savings Bank. For three consecutive years, they have been a community partner for our RSH22 and the leaders among us. I mentioned RH Foster last month and I wanted to thank Tommy Taylor, who's the branch manager here in Camden for facilitating that. It's quite a process and we are very grateful for their generosity because they keep giving year after year after year. Also, earlier in the year, we wrote an opioid trust grant. And that deadline to apply was backed up. And therefore, the results of seeing learning who has been awarded to the grant has also been backed up. So we expect by the end of this month, we will find out if we would have a mobile office and an employee for our community outreach. All the things that Mrs. Pratt talked about today and we talked about in the Education Committee, about getting kids through the door, that's why we wrote that grant. So our fingers are still crossed. You haven't heard anything simply because I haven't heard anything.
Monthly financial report. This was printed Friday before the board meeting. So we're looking at about 13 and a half percent left of the school year, 12% of the fiscal year. A couple of our articles are running a little high, so we're going to look into those. And everything else seems to be fairly consistent with where we are. If you look back at last year's report, we're just about identical to where we were last year as well. Student report.
Good evening, everyone. Firstly, I have some school updates. Yesterday, our AP Literature classes hosted the annual poetry slam. And it was a really powerful event where many student poets got the chance to share their original work. The honesty and creativity in the room were incredible and it was a great way to celebrate student voice. On Monday night, we held our academic awards night where juniors received college book awards. And each department recognized one junior for excellence and one senior for excellence. It was a meaningful night to acknowledge the academic work happening across all areas of the school. And prom took place on May 10th with this year's theme being Golden Hour. The junior class did an amazing job transforming the space and it was a night full of joy, dancing and unforgettable memories. AP exams have been moving along smoothly and most students have wrapped theirs up. Late exams are occurring this week. This past weekend, many of our student musicians participated in the All-State Festival at the University of Maine. It was a great opportunity to work with some of the top music educators in the country and to hear the New York voices in one of their final performances, definitely a highlight. This Friday, R&B and Chopir will have their final performance of the year at Marsh River Theater. It's always a fun show and a great way to close out the season. Next Saturday, we'll be heading to the Greatest Festival to perform and receive feedback from adjudicators as we wrap up the music year. And then on June 2nd, we'll have our prison concert will be the final performance for band and chorus for the year. And it'll definitely be bittersweet for me as it'll be my last concert as a student at Camden Academy. And with just eight days left for seniors, it's definitely bittersweet as well. We're all feeling the mix of excitement and nostalgia as we wrap up our time here. I'm grateful for this community and I'll carry it with me into my future. And a quick note, HAMMA, our Music Boosters Association, is looking for new parent volunteers for next year as many of the current ones have graduated seniors. So if anyone is interested or knows someone who may be, we'd love for them to get involved. Now, if I may, I'd like to take a moment to close with a few personal reflections as this is my final meeting as a board representative. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as a student representative over the past two years. Sharing student updates and being present for these meetings has been an incredibly meaningful experience. It's been eye opening to see how deeply everyone here cares about education and the future of our schools. Growing up, school boards felt distant, people in formal attire making decisions behind closed doors. But this experience revealed something much more human. A group of dedicated people working hard to make compassionate, thoughtful choices that truly benefit this community. And even without a vote as a student rep, being part of these meetings has offered so much. There was a chance to listen, learn and contribute in small but valuable ways. Watching the board in action taught me important lessons about leadership, communication and teamwork. Lessons I'll carry with me into my future. There's a lot of excitement for the future as I'll be attending the University of Maine to study biology on pre-med track with plans to minor neuroscience. That path wouldn't be possible without the encouragement and support of many people. So thank you to Mr. Ruland, Mr. Raymond and Mrs. Boone for your leadership and support. To Mr. Hills and Mr. Kissinger for the interview and continued guidance. And to every teacher from Smith School to Wagner to Camden Academy who helped shape this journey. And of course, to friends and family, thank you for being a steady presence every step of the way. This experience meant more than words can fully express. Thank you for welcoming my student voice and everything you do for this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Liliana, for your service. And I know it's not the most exciting thing I would have thought when I was a 17-year-old to come hang out with a bunch of old people. But thank you for sitting in for these last two years. And we wish you well moving forward. All right, now I open it up to questions on the board. All right, committee reports were in, in minutes, were in the packet. Any questions to committee chairs about any of those? I feel like I should have a big sign for you, Fay, when it's policy time. Because floor is yours.
Some of you, when you saw the agenda, went, what was Fay thinking? Well, we're moving forward. Many of you will see, if you looked at the minutes, this is going to go quickly because there's a bunch of deletes in here. So hopefully we'll be able to go through this rather quickly. The first policy, or first reading is policy D, B, DB. And I apologize right now, the Bs and the Ds are going to get very mixed up. I'll repeat them to get them right. So it is DBDB, election of board officers, which will now be re, a new title as board officers. You will see that an awful lot has been added to this. The reason being is the next seven will be deleted and they will all be in one policy versus several little policies. So it is the Policy Committee moves to approve a first reading, policy BDB, board officers as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comment on policy BDB? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the first reading of policy BDB, board officers. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next set will be done in two parts. The first one will be to, the Policy Committee moves to approve a first reading, policy, oop, nevermind. Policy Committee moves that the following policies be considered as a slate. Policy BDBA, board officers chair. Policy BDBB, board officers vice chair. Policy BDBC, board officers chair pro temp. Policy BDCA, appointed board officials secretary. And policy BDCD, appointed board officials treasurer.
We have a motion and a second to take the above listed policies as a slate. Any discussion?
I just have a question. In our notes, it looks like we also need to, do we need to delete the old BDB?
No, we have added to DVD. If you look at the policy that is in your packet, you will see that the very beginning of it is in black. Some of it is deleted. That was the original policy. And so by adding the rest of it, then no, we are not deleting BDB. Simply adding to it.
Right. Thanks for the question.
This is not for approval. This is to consider these as a slate. All those in favor for taking policy BDBA, BDBB, BDBC, BDCA and BDCB as a slate? All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Based on that, the Policy Committee moves to delete the policies that were listed as a slate.
Any discussion? All right, so the motion on the floor is to delete the policies on the slate. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next policy is policy BBAA, board member authority and responsibilities. This policy was updated to reflect current practice. The legal reference was also added to the document. The Policy Committee moves to approve a first reading, policy BBAA, board member authority and responsibilities as presented.
If a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, the motion and the second on the floors, the approval for first reading of policy BBAA, board member authority and responsibilities. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next policy, wait a minute. Okay, get that one. The next one is policy BBA. The next one is policy BBA, School Board Powers and Responsibilities. A legal reference was at, was, the only thing different in this policy is the legal reference was added to this policy. Policy Committee moves to approve for first reading, policy BBA, School Board Powers and Responsibilities as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do want to comment, Fay, that I like how everything's getting cleaned up at the RSU twenty-two because we've got policies that are all over the place date-wise. I'm sure you still run across some SAUs every once in a while.
Well, we, yeah, those will be coming up pretty soon, so.
Any other discussion? All right, the motion and second on the floor is to approve for first reading, policy BBA, School Board Powers and Responsibilities. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next one is policy BBBA, Board Member Qualifications. This policy was totally revamped and made more succinct. Legal references were added to the document. The Policy Committee moves to approve for first reading, policy BBBA, Board Member Qualifications as presented.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All right, the motion and second on the floor is to approve for first reading, policy BBBA, Board Member Qualifications. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next policy is BBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. This policy was reviewed and some language was updated. The legal reference was also updated as we are no longer in MSAD, we are in RSU and it is under a different section of the law. Therefore, the Policy Committee, wait a minute. Wait, am I on the right one? Yes, all right. For a moment there, I thought. So the Policy Committee moves for first reading, policy BBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment, which will also be renamed, by the way, for first reading as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? John?
So I just want to make sure, so if somebody comes in, if somebody resigns and someone's appointed, they're only, they don't finish up the term of that person and just goes to the next election? That's saying, you know, the next annual municipal election.
So you're asking about policy BDBA, correct? No, BD. We did have a discussion regarding that one, and basically at that point, it is the town that makes that decision. So it does say that the superintendent will get in touch with the selectmen or councilmen of the town, of the town involved, who shall thereupon appoint a replacement board member to represent that town. So what is it you're asking to have?
So the last, the last sentence says such appointees shall hold the office until the next annual municipal election. And I'm wondering, do they, they fulfill the term of the person they're replacing? Or is it actually the next annual, you know, election? And if each town's different, I wonder if you should know it in the policy?
I'll check into that because I don't know.
The one issue I would see is that implementing town code or policy into our policy would then necessitate us changing it every time that happens, but. Right.
And instead of naming their actual policy, we just say they were going to follow the sent policy. And that way, if it changes, then we're still in compliance with it.
If we just, if we just didn't say anything, if we just took the last whole sentence and halved the other sentence out and left it after the word involved, put a period, and we didn't put anything else, the town people are the only. Our obligation would be met when we know about the town.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you still need the rest of that? Because the town is then going to appoint the replacement?
We don't know what they're going to do. Are they going to appoint or are they going to relax?
Until the next election.
I'll check further into the law and for second reading, I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, because I think that he brings up a good point because we can't compel the towns to do something, so. Any further discussion?
There is a law, though, that goes with that, and I don't have it pulled up in front of me. So I'm going to look into the law a little bit more and then maybe I'll, maybe then I'll explain it better.
All right. So the motion and second on the floor is to approve for first reading, policy BBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next one is policy BBC, Board Member Resignation. This policy is a duplicate of the policy and the language that we reflected in BBE. Therefore, the title of this one, the title of the one before will become Board Member Resignation. And so the Policy Committee moves to delete policy BBC, Board Member Resignation.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All right, the motion is to delete policy BBC, Board Member Resignation. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next policy is policy VCA, Code of Ethics. A few changes were made to section O and of the original policy and the sections Q and R were added. The Policy Committee moves to approve for first reading, policy VCA, Code of Ethics as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve for first reading, policy VCA, Code of Ethics. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The last one for first reading is policy BDD, Board Superintendent Relationships. Again, I put the year in there so that you could see how old some of these are. This policy was completely updated to give more, again, specificity to the document. Legal references and cross-references were added. The Policy Committee moves to approve for first reading, policy BDD, Board Superintendent Relations as presented.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All right, the motion is to approve for first reading, policy BDD, Board Superintendent Relationships. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
We now move on to second reading. First one and second reading is policy AC, Non-Discrimination, Equal Opportunity, and Affirmative Action. No changes were made to this policy since the first reading. The Policy Committee moves to approve for second reading, policy AC, Non-Discrimination, Equal Opportunity, and Affirmative Action as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on policy AC? All right, the motion is to approve for second reading, policy AC, Non-Discrimination, Equal Opportunity, and Affirmative Action. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next policy is ACAB, which is now renamed to Harassment and Sexual Harassment of School Employees. No changes were made to this policy since the first reading. Policy Committee moves to approve for second reading, policy ACAB, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of School Employees as presented.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion on policy ACAB? All right, and forgive me for the protocol, I'm going to use the new title when we put it up for a vote, but. So the motion on the floor is to approve policy ACAB, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of School Employees. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
The next policy is ACAA, new title being Harassment and Sexual Harassment of Students. No changes were made to this policy. The Policy Committee moves to approve for second reading, policy ACAA, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of Students as presented.
Any discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve for second reading, policy ACAA, Harassment and Sexual Harassment of Students. All those in favor?
One last thing is I want to thank this committee that works really hard on all of these. It really is a lot to think about and to reflect upon. So again, I really want to thank this committee for their hard work.
Thank you, Fay. And so that wraps up policy and brings us to old business. And we have one item on there, that's to discuss an act on the 2025-26 school calendar.
The calendar that you have been presented has one adjustment from the last meeting, shifting the December, originally December twelfth, early dismissal day, down to December twenty-third. So December twelfth will be a full day and December twenty-third will be an early dismissal day. Everything else has remained the same.
So at this point, I would accept a motion on the calendar.
I would make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the calendar as presented. Any discussion? All right, so the motion on the floor is to approve the calendar, the 2025-26 school calendar as presented. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Oh, sorry, John. All those opposed? Years of service going to that, too, right? So now we move on to new business. And it looks like the first item is to discuss an act of laptop donation.
This is actually the second time that we've had the opportunity to have some donations from the Maine State Police involving laptops. So they are looking to donate twelve Panasonic ToughBooks to our technology education program here at Camden Academy that would be used for technology or tech ed as well as the robotics group. The estimated value, because of that value, that's why it comes to the board. So the estimated value, in their mind, is anywhere from six thousand to eighty-four hundred dollars for the twelve books. And so I would certainly ask for a motion to hopefully approve those. We've had a great partnership with the state police and the devices, even though they've outlived the state lease, they have been fantastic for our program. Very nice pieces of equipment.
I'm moved to accept the donation of Panasonic ToughBooks and the Maine State Police would be used within our technology education program at Camden Academy.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the donation of the laptops. Any discussion? All right, not hearing any. The motion on the floor is to accept the donation of the laptops from the Maine State Police. All those in favor? And that looks like everyone has done.
Uh, next part of our agenda deals with the administrative contracts, which you folks do on an annual basis. Those contract figures are within your packet. And some of them have, obviously, some of the positions have changed and so therefore they're in a different role, but those are certainly based on having competitive salaries for administrators as well as our regional index that we look at throughout the district and performance.
I'm moved to accept the administrative salaries for the 2025-26 school year as presented.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the administrative salaries as presented to us. Is there any discussion?
Where's Nick's salary?
That's not part of this, it's done in executive session.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to accept the administrative salaries for the 2025-26 school year as presented. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Next thing on our agenda deals with our probationary teachers. This is a multi-step process. We are dealing with approving individuals who are currently in their first year, moving to their second year. And then we are also dealing with those that are currently in their second year, moving to continuing contract. All of those lists are in there and these are all based on the recommendations from the principals to myself. These are my nominations moving forward into the next step for them.
So this needs to be done in two steps and the motions, I would appreciate, be read as written in the agenda notes.
I'm moved to accept the superintendent's nomination of personnel to second-year probationary contracts.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the nomination of personnel to second-year probationary contracts. Any discussion? All right, so once again, the motion is to accept the superintendent's nomination of personnel to second-year probationary contracts. to second year probationary contracts. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
I move to accept the superintendent's nomination of personnel to continuing contracts.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alright, so the motion on the floor is to accept the superintendent's nomination of personnel to continuing contracts. All those in favor? And that's unanimous.
Last part of new business is regarding our FY '26 district budget. Just as a disclaimer, you folks had the presentation last week for the two hours. What has changed in that? Very little has changed, much of which we already announced that evening. The bulk of the things that had changed were the iPad, individual iPads. The cost has increased by $20, and so that is now reflected in there. But the revenue is also reflected that way, so there's $20 additional dollars per device that comes in as revenue. So that is completely offset, but we do have to at least show the additional expense. And since our May 14th meeting, we have had some personnel changes. That's another adjustment from the last time. So what we're looking at right now, you'll, you'll see the total number when that comes around. Last week, we're at a 4.44% increase with the adjustments that had come in with the additional expenses. We're at a 4.53%, so the total number is $40,783,924.15. And again, the major changes in there were the iPads and shifting personnel and new, new personnel. If and when, this is, I, another part to it, if and when this is all approved, there is a signature that we need from you times 15. So this is the process that we start the paperwork on one end. Everyone has a blue pen on the table, and if you have your own pen, that's fine, as long as it's blue. We do ask it's the same color. When you start signing, you will sign the same exact line on each one of the 15 papers. So if you sign on the ninth line, please on the 15th paper also sign on the ninth line. We have three different forms of paperwork. We have a notice of amounts that will be adopted. So in the event that we change the amounts tonight, we'll have to handwrite that in to reflect that. We have the notice of election, and we have the warrants. So in total, 18. We have five for the notice of amounts, eight for the notice of election, and five for the warrant articles.
So I would accept the motion on the budget.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget as presented.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, and Alan and Jessica are going to arm wrestle to see if they accept. Alright, any discussion? Alright, so the motion on the floor is to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget as presented. All those in favor? Any opposed? And any abstentions? That's unanimous. I thought that was everyone, but I wanted to be sure for the budget that we reflected accurately. Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. So what I wanted to draw your attention to is next month is a little unusual for, especially for those of you new to the board. We will have our district budget meeting in the Handan Academy gym on Thursday, June 5th. If it's at all possible for you to be there, I encourage you to be there. Full board presence is, is, sets a, a tone for the, the budget process, and, and so. I understand that if you can't, but it's, please be there if you can. And then also note that the board meeting, the June board meeting will be on Thursday, June 12th. So that's on a Thursday, and it's the second week of the month, so that's a bit out of the ordinary, so. Please pay attention to that in your calendar. So, well, we're going to be signing forms right now, and after we do that, we're going to be going into executive session. And those are the last orders of business for the day, so if you want to stay, you're welcome to, but you don't have to.
Let me ask the question, please. I didn't ask it fast enough. On the, on the renewal of teachers from probationary status, first year to second year, and then the second year, third year, there was an extra page in our packet that said continuing teacher status to annual teacher. What's the difference there? Aren't they still on continuing contract? I, I, I don't understand that part. Too many Bs were said tonight, so I think that's the problem.
I'll defer to Nick or Tina on that one.
Oh, okay, well, I didn't either, but I, but I asked. Alright.
But you wrote a correct one.
I just didn't know what third day this was.